Get going.
[inaudible]
Do we do the pledge?
We don't have to.
Okay. Good afternoon to everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order for this afternoon workshop session. If the clerk could please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, councilmember Hanson, councilmember Carr, councilmember Jennings, councilmember Guerra, councilmember Schneer, and mayor Steinberg.
Here. I know councilmember Ashby will be here soon. We'll do the pledge of allegiance tonight in the evening meeting if that's okay appropriate. Let's get right to the subject matter of today's workshop, which is the homeless sheltering policy options. And we do have Emily Halkin here, of course, our outstanding homeless services coordinator, who's going to present. I might make just an opening comment. All of our sessions are important. This is a very important session. There are many pieces of the city's homeless strategy. Certainly, we've had lengthy meetings and conversations about our 60-plus million-dollar Whole Person Care initiative. We've had conversations about our partnership with the county around the Mental Health Services Act. You've brought before the council, and we'll have further conversation with the council about the new state homeless emergency assistance program where the city and the county together potentially have $18 million or so to gain, to help us with our problem. Today, we want to talk about our shelter system. It is no secret, I hope, because it's good news, that we have had new success with the low-barrier triage model off of Railroad Avenue. And yet Railroad Avenue is not the only shelter that we have in the city of Sacramento. And from the day I became mayor, I'd said this to Emily yesterday, the first meeting I think we ever met, that we ever talked about these sets of issues, she shared with me, and I readily agreed, that we must have a goal, if not standardizing our operations in every shelter, at least having a real conversation about what do we want to spend our public dollars to try to achieve when it comes to shelter. And certainly, I've made it a point since I've become mayor, and I know the council has agreed, that we want to get thousands of people off the streets permanently, period. And so this conversation about what kind of shelter is most effective, how we should spend our public resources going forward, and what direction we should give our city manager and our homeless services coordinator about how we view shelter is timely and very, very important. With those introductory comments, I'd like to turn it over to Emily to take us through your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, mayor. Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. I'm really happy to be here to have this conversation the mayor sort of outlined. Before I start, I'd like to recognize Andrew Gurking, who's sitting up here. Most of you guys who know him, he's an analyst who works with me and really is the lead staff on all of our sheltering programs, including, most notably, the Railroad Triad Shelter. And I do need to say, he's the brain behind most of what I'm going to share today, and so he's here as well to help answer any questions that you might have. And so as the mayor said, the goal of today's workshop is to have a really robust conversation and hopefully get to a point where we can adopt a city policy related to city investments in sheltering programs. The workshop is not about any particular shelter itself or about any particular funding source, although, as the mayor noted this evening, we will be having a conversation about a new funding source related to sheltering. But what we want to do is get to a common understanding of city objectives about when or if the city invests in shelters. So this might seem like a basic question, but I really wanted to sort of have a step back on what is a shelter. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is the primary lead agency at the federal level, at least, on homelessness and housing issues, and they have a very simplistic definition of emergency shelter as containing these three characteristics. First, having overnight sheltering accommodations, providing some level of very undefined services, and that it serves a population that can be defined. And that population can be general, as anybody, come one, come all, or very specific to a subpopulation. So as you can see, this doesn't really give us a lot, and perhaps this is part of the reason why here in Sacramento, and really in other communities too, there's a wide variety of programs and approaches that we call shelter. You all know of a lot of programs here in our community that we commonly call of shelter, but that operate very, very differently. So I'd like to start just by sharing what we do know about the emergency shelters in our community. And I should say, before I go in, there's a much deeper dive into the data contained in the staff report, which gets into those numbers a little bit more deeply, and we're happy to go there as well as part of the conversation. So first is, how many beds do we have here in our community? You'd think this would be an easy thing to answer. It's actually somewhat challenging. But at the height of the winter, when seasonal beds become available, we estimate that our system has the capacity to shelter just under 1,500 people. And I do say approximately because shelters that serve families are difficult to enumerate because they flex up and flex down depending on the family that presented them. So we measure family shelters in terms of units, but that unit could have a mother and a child, or a mother, father, and five children, and would be counted the same. So I did make an attempt to translate these numbers into beds so that we could try to compare apples to apples. And if we assume the average family size is about three, which I think is roughly where it's at, then we have about 72% of our beds available to individuals and 26% for people in families. And just as a comparison to what we know about need, in the 2017 point-in-time count, which is the most recent time that we enumerated the entire homeless population, approximately 16% of the people that we counted were in families, and 84% were single adults or transition age youth. And I do also want to note that this is not, this is a very simplistic portrayal. Recognize that many of our beds have additional targeting that might not be shown here for survivors of domestic violence, or veterans, or transition age youth, et cetera.
That's a good question.
Yes. Emily, on the seasonal, can you just go a little bit more specific? Does that include winter sanctuary?
It does. The biggest thing here is winter sanctuary. There are also some other sheltering programs that open up additional capacity over the winter, but the primary driver here is winter sanctuary. And also, there's some winter sanctuary programs in the other cities, Citrus Heights, Rancho, Cordova, Full, Slim, and Elk Grove, all have rotating faith-based shelters in the winter. So we worked with Sacramento Steps Forward, who really is the host here in our community of all of the data on our homeless system of care, to pull data from the past three years on outcomes in our shelter system. And we're only going to talk about the aggregate level, because again, this isn't about any particular program, but I wanted to start off with some really positive things that we can share. First, our capacity has substantially increased just over the past year. Note that these counts of beds are made in January of every year, so it may not be reflective of what's on the ground today. But most notably, this dramatic rise in the beds in the blue bar, up 65%, is almost entirely related to our opening of the triad shelter, as well as the county's new scattered site sheltering program. A second really positive thing is our shelters have been focusing on taking—
I'm sorry, Emily, city or county data?
These are countywide. We do not have the data for shelters that are only in the city, although I will say that with the exception of one of our family shelters, and maybe a couple of the smaller, very population-targeted shelters, all of them are in the jurisdiction of the city of Sacramento.
Mostly city.
Mostly, yes. Secondly, another really positive thing is our shelter system as a whole is focusing on taking more people directly from the streets, as opposed to just two years ago, when disproportionately more people were entering our shelters from a non-homeless situation. This doesn't mean they weren't not precariously housed or weren't very vulnerable. People were entering from motels, or couch surfing, or other types of situations that were not directly on the streets. And while we never want to force somebody to go onto the streets to access a shelter bed if they are in crisis, we do want to see that the majority of folks entering the sheltering system are coming directly from the streets. Otherwise, you're going to be serving people who maybe could be served better with a diversion strategy. We don't exactly know why this is, but we think it might be a result partly of lowering barriers to access, both in the city shelters, but also our sheltering community as a whole, and also the direct work that we're now doing with our navigation programs and the police impact team to connect with folks who are deeply embedded in encampments. However, there are some challenges in our system. Over the past two years, the number of people exiting from a shelter into permanent housing has decreased by 28%. That is the green bars. It should be the biggest number, but you can see in 2016, 922 people exited directly from shelters to housing, and this past year, and I should note, these are fiscal years, 661. And the number of exits from a shelter back into unsheltered homelessness has increased by 30%. And I don't want in any way suggest that this is the fault of the shelters themselves. Shelters can only be as effective as housing people when there's availability of housing at the back end. So this is likely very reflective of the tight rental housing market, but also in the funding and capacity within the shelter systems to provide those intensive housing services and wraparound supportive services to help move people on. Logically, then, when the people that we're seeing in our shelters report at much higher rates having been homeless for many, many years, this makes sense given that we're exiting people into homelessness more often. Shelters originally were really intended to be a place for an emergency stay in a moment of crisis for a person or a family, but have become almost a de facto home for many of these people cycling in and out of streets and shelter. But these trends are not unique to Sacramento. Communities throughout the country are struggling with these same issues, and many like Sacramento have developed triad shelters or navigation centers, or we call them all sorts of different things, to try to improve outcomes by approaching sheltering differently. So while the data presented in this chart is not the same timeframe, one is a fiscal year and one is the entirety of the timeframe which our railroad shelter has been open, you can see that despite some of the challenges we've had with standing up the railroad shelter in a really quick timeframe and resourcing issues, we have seen outcomes that are, I think, at least as good as, and in many cases somewhat better than the overall shelter system. So I'm just going to stop and point out some of the things that resonated to me and Andrew as we were looking at this data. In our railroad triad shelter, 84% of the people are entering directly from the streets, and that is 100% due to the hard work of the outreach teams, the community health workers, and the impact team connecting with folks in encampments, whereas in the shelter system as a whole, 57%. As you go down, you can see the folks in our railroad triad shelter have a very high level of disabilities. They are disproportionately older, and they have much more extensive lengths of time homeless at the time they enter. But despite all that, despite the vulnerability and the challenges of this population that we've seen, our exits to permanent housing are on par with the overall shelter system. And I did want to note that this only captures folks exiting to permanent housing. If we add on people who have exited transitional programs and some of the other supportive types of exits, 33% of the folks exiting our railroad shelter site would fall into that category.
So I want to stop there, because people always ask me all the time, you know, they don't wade through all the detail, but they want to know, how many people have you gotten off the streets as a result of the triage facility, either housed in shelter itself, transitional housing, or permanent housing? And I know that's a complicated data issue, but can you give us a ballpark, please?
I believe it's 150, and I'm looking at Andrew's. That number sound right? 600 total have been in the shelter, and approximately 150 have moved on to something that's not unsheltered.
Okay, but the 600 includes people who are currently in the shelter?
Yes.
So that's 350.
Yes, if you would take out the—yes, if you're counting the people who are currently remain in there and haven't yet exited, yes.
And then you have whole person care, where there is a major overlap, I understand, between whole person care and triage. There are people who, through whole person care, we have gotten off the streets into shelter, aside from the 200 currently at Railroad Avenue and the 150 who've exited out to some other form of housing, correct?
Yes, although the majority of folks in whole person care have at one point or another touched the railroad shelter, so disentangling those is very difficult, and we're committed to doing that, but I don't have those numbers right now.
Okay. Yep.
To jump in if we have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Emily, the 150 people that we've moved into permanent shelter, how much did that cost us?
So the operations for the railroad shelter on a monthly basis are approximately $400,000. However, that includes things such as the lease, such as community mitigation measures, as well as the actual operation of the shelter. It also includes long-term leases of the restrooms and the showers and garbage service. So that is the true cost, but I think that it's not necessarily translatable to a triad shelter that might be in a more permanent location where you wouldn't have these extraneous capital costs, if that makes sense.
So the number was 400,000?
$400,000 a month, and we've been operating for 10 months, 11 months now. I'm trying to do math in my head real quick, but I'm—
Over 40.
Thank you.
Over 4 million?
Yeah.
But this is why the numbers are dangerous here, but I got to just say this to put this into the context here. It's not 150. You've got 200 people that are currently in the shelter.
Yes, plus another 150 who have left.
Right. Out of 600 total, so you're saying that 250 are back out on the streets? Or maybe they're reunited with families, or they're—
Or they're unknown where they are, yes.
Okay, so out of the 600 that have entered Railroad Avenue, 350 are not on the streets.
Yes, that's a good way of saying it.
Okay.
But only 150 are in permanent housing or something?
But this new cohort is still being assessed and being helped to try to determine where their permanent shelter or housing might be?
Yes.
Okay.
Slightly different question. So kind of the thing that popped out to me on length of time, that you have 83% are a year or more? So 17% of the people?
Well, I think that's not exactly right, because people who are four-plus years would also be one-plus year, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay, so those—
Because you can fall into—yeah, it's—that's correct, right, Andrew? Yeah, so if you had been homeless for four-plus years, you'd be doubly counted in that.
83% of the people have been homeless for at least a year, if not a lot longer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So 17—hang on. 17% are under—
Well, actually, I believe it might be 61%, mayor.
It's 61, because 22 is part of the 61.
Right.
Okay, so that makes more sense, because it seemed like if you only had 17% of folks who've been homeless less than a year coming in, it's like, where are those—okay, I got it.
Okay. Councilman Harris?
Thanks, mayor. Councilmember Carr, in response to your queries, what people often forget is what these unhoused people cost the city when they're living outdoors. It's a very significant cost. If you refer back to our Cost of Homelessness report back in 2015, which I understand is being updated soon—
We are updating it. Wait, yes.
A lot of these unhoused individuals living out in the wild can cost the city up to $100,000 each per year, some of them as much as a million in terms of services, transport, impacts on emergency rooms, and so forth. The backend savings on getting 150 people into permanent housing is tremendous, and maybe you can address that a little bit, Emily? Because, you know, you think, okay, $4 million for 10 months of operations, and only 150 people have reached a semi-permanent conclusion to their chronic homelessness, but the amount of money it saves the region and the city is much, much more than $4.4 million. Maybe you can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult to quantify, but I think it's an important point. I mean, there's lots of studies at the national level that show the cost of folks, the cost to the community and to society when people are unsheltered is dramatically larger than when they are housed, even if they are housed in very expensive subsidized housing with permanent subsidies and case management. Locally, you know, we did the exercise a couple of years ago now with social finance to look at the top users just of two systems, the county jail and the county behavioral health system. And the county has since taken that data and targeted some resources to those top 250 users. And if I recall off the top of my head, amongst those top 250, the number-one person, if you rank them in terms of cost to those two systems alone over the course of a year, was upwards of $40,000 or $50,000. And so housing that one person alone, and that's only two systems, it doesn't include the hospitals, or police, or fire departments. So I think it's an important point, is that there are costs whether folks are indoors or outdoors. I just wanted to add one—
Have we seen our cost decrease, our cleanup cost decrease, the number of code enforcement officers decrease? Have we seen a proportionate decrease in what we have to pay because we took either 150 or 350 people off the street?
I haven't seen numbers like that, and I'm not—we're working with some of the other departments to quantify on an ongoing basis. We did that one-time cost study that Councilmember Harris referred to, and we're working to both update that and then to make it a regular part of my division's report out to you, because I think it's important. So we're working with Public Works and Utilities and Parks to come up with a way to quantify those. So I don't have that right now, and I'm not sure if somebody from those departments could anecdotally tell you, but— One other thing I wanted to add, just because I happened to just leave the county board of supervisors where they were doing a conversation about the HEAP program that we're going to talk about tonight, and in that conversation, they shared some outputs from their scattered site shelters, which while much smaller than the railroad triad shelter, have embraced the same philosophy: low barrier access, wraparound services, housing orientation. And their rates to exits to permanent housing was just about the same as ours. It was at 32% when I did my quick math, and ours is 25% to permanent, 33% to something that's a pathway to housing. So what I took away from that is that the shift into this approach is working not only on a large scale at the railroad triad shelter, but it can also work on a smaller scale like the county is implementing.
Emily, I wanted to just ask, you know, because I've heard a lot of information about the success of the shelter, you know, or, you know, really trying to quantify what the successes are, you know? And I think, obviously, if we can help save one person, that's a success, and when you can, you know, extrapolate that out to hundreds of people, that is—it's hard to put a real value number on how you change people's lives and put them into, you know, a more human existence, if you will. But the questions I have are, from what you've seen in all of the research, have you seen a homeless model similar to our triage, or something maybe different, that has worked any better than the one that we have on railroad?
I think that's exactly what we're going to talk about now, is how to translate some of the work we've done and align it with some national best practices. I think the basic answer is, is yes. You know, we didn't invent—the—
Yes, what?
Yes, there are other programs who have done things similar to railroad, who have seen very similar and sometimes even better success. You know, we didn't think up railroad on our own, I'd like to take credit for it, but really, it was modeled after the navigation centers in San Francisco, and many other jurisdictions since have embraced that. These are sheltering programs, and they've stood up in the heart of the city in various physical structures, but embrace the same philosophy: outreach engagement, access only through outreach, no walk-up, 24/7, low barrier, intensive case management provided on-site, and a fully housing focus. And the outputs of the navigation system, which has grown substantially in San Francisco, I think continue to be amongst their best performance in their community shelter system. So what we are doing at railroad and what the county is now doing in their scattered site, as I said, is not inventive necessarily or untested. It does follow best practices from other communities, San Francisco being the most obvious one, and it also embraces policy directives from our partners at the federal and state government. At the national level, the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness establishes federal policies to address homelessness, and they have encouraged shelter programs to orient towards embracing these key principles, which are also detailed in an attachment to your staff report. I think it's number four in a nice visual that was put together. And you can see these sort of really simplistic pie pieces. There's a lot more to it, but overall, these changes are intended to help transform a system of shelters, which may or may not be connected to each other, into a housing crisis resolution system. Not only are the federal policymakers telling us that these are the changes that we need to make to—if we want to effectuate change in our homeless population in our shelters, but the funding programs that support the shelters frankly are requiring it now. The two biggest shelter funding partners that we have now at the federal level is the Emergency Solutions Grant that HUD administers, and at the state level, it's the homeless emergency aid program that we're going to talk about tonight. Both require adherence to Housing First components, which I've detailed here. So how can we help to make this shift to creating a housing crisis resolution system amongst the shelters that we currently have here in Sacramento? We've already, as I said, we've already tested some of these approaches at the railroad site, and we certainly have a lot more to do at railroad, but we might soon have some significant new funding to add additional sites or to invest in some of our existing shelter programs. And while the physical design of a shelter isn't necessarily as important as the operational guidelines and the commitment to housing outcomes, I did want to quickly go through five different models and how they might impact our ability to transform the shelter system. This is not exhaustive. I can probably imagine up other ways that you could provide sheltering, but these are sort of the five most common ones and ones that we have examples of here in our community today. So starting at the top, congregate shelter, that is the most broad category. That could be anything from railroad with a big open space and bunk beds, to a more family shelter like Next Move or St. John's, which has individual units, but people are still congregantly living together. Scattered site is the model the county has launched here using master leases in small single-family homes and sheltering five—
And we got a question on the congregate. When we say low barrier, how low is low?
So the X's in the chart are meant to say, could you achieve this, not are we achieving it? Let me just say that quickly. So what I mean by low barrier typically means that there are not preconditions to entering that dictate how you behave, or sobriety, or compliance with medication treatment. It doesn't mean you can use drugs on-site or be intoxicated to a point where you are medically at risk, but it does mean that there's no drug test or alcohol test at entry. It does mean that you don't—you tendency is not dictated on your willingness or ability to participate in programs or chores or something like that. It also can mean, although this is more difficult because of physical constraints, that we would accept you with partners, pets, and possessions. Some of our shelters, I do recognize, might not have the physical ability to do that, but that's another huge barrier.
So you can use, just not on-site?
Yeah, at the railroad shelter, there is no drug testing. You cannot use on-site, and if you come to a point where you are so inebriated that you are medically not able to be safe, you can't be there, and medical intervention would happen. Yeah. Scattered site is, as I said, using leased single-family homes. Typically, you'd have no more than five or six people staying at this home. And the nice thing about scattered sites is they can be ramped up and down rather quickly. They also can serve subpopulations in a really nuanced way. You know, a congregate facility is great for numbers, but there are some subpopulations that are not comfortable being sheltered in a congregate setting. So having the ability to have a small shelter for something like transition age youth, or LGBTQ folks, or folks with certain disabilities is a nice strategy if you're trying to serve subpopulations. Host homes is typically—is basically a family hosting somebody in their home. This is done typically with youth populations. It's not done at scale. It's a very small nuanced program, but it can be super effective, especially for younger people, whose homelessness might be due more to family separation than to being on the streets for years and years. Motel vouchers, again, can ramp up and down really, really quickly, but is really hard to implement and is almost impossible to bring to scale. Also, very difficult to serve the most needy in a hotel or motel— Also, very difficult to serve the most needy in a hotel or motel because there's no onsite services and you're sort of on your own. And then congregation host is what we all know here as Winter Sanctuary or the Pilgrimage, where faith-based organizations will rotate, typically rotate, sheltering responsibilities typically through the winter. Very, very cost-effective, very empowering for the community, but really not a scalable model to get to quantities of folks. So I wanted to just really quickly, because we've been talking a lot about the physical structure, just show some examples, both from our community and from others, in physical depictions. So as I said, congregate shelters are the broadest. It could be, it could be a facility with 15 people or 500 people or anything in between it. So here's some examples, we've talked quite a bit about the sprung structures, that's the bottom-left picture, one of the San Diego sprung structures. At the top-right is a facility up in Auburn that is the reuse of a government program, a government facility, and it's got, I think, about 40 or 50 people in there. And the bottom-right is one of the navigation centers in San Francisco. And you can see some of the local examples, and if you know these programs, you know that they're more dissimilar to each other in some ways than similar, but they all would be considered congregate. Scattered site shelters, there's really no picture depiction because it's just a single-family home, and one of the great things about it is it can be stood up in the context of a community, and you wouldn't necessarily know which home is the shelter and which isn't. I will say on these three pictures, one of them actually is a scattered site shelter, the other two are stock photos that I grabbed. Currently, the county has done this, and it does appear to be very successful. It is hard to bring to scale, and it, obviously you lose some cost efficiencies because you're dispersing administration across, in their case, 15 different locations. Host homes, again, we talked about this, there's really no physical attribute, this is somebody's home, that somebody who opens their home typically a room or a granny flat or some unused part of their home for somebody to stay in. It's typically very short stays, and typically the person is supported by another organization through case management. Motels and hotels, obviously there's a plethora of types of motels and hotels. The county does run a motel voucher program that they use in crisis situations, and the Impact Team partners with them from time to time in a crisis to get somebody into a motel. It is becoming increasingly more and more difficult to find motels that will accept these vouchers, and it's difficult to provide services to people when they're scattered throughout in different motels. But there are some programs that currently in our community that do do this, and it is a nice option to have in a moment of crisis because motels never close. And then finally, congregation hosts, so these are some pictures from last year's Winter Sanctuary, they probably all look different, I know some of you participate in Winter Sanctuary. So this is a congregation hosting in whatever facilities they have for a night, for a week. It is pretty low services, but it's a really engaging way for the community at large to participate in helping those folks experiencing homelessness. So while the approach to sheltering must be responsive to our community, both those that we're hoping to serve and those who we are asking to host a shelter, at the core of any shelter program should be a commitment to this charge that comes from our national federal partners. And I just, to me, this sort of encapsured everything that we're trying to get to in one really succinct statement, so I thought I would share that. Given our experience in operating our own shelter programs and supporting shelter programs throughout the community, best practices that we've learned from other places, federal policy, and then our funding directives, staff recommends that council adopt a policy statement confirming a commitment to fund shelter programs that do these seven things. First, emphasize low barrier access. Second, commit to coordinated entry when our coordinated entry system, which is run by SACCEPS Forward, is ready to engage them. Third, strive to operate 24/7. Fourth, provide intensive housing and case management services onsite. Next, commit to collaboration with other providers. There's no one partner who can do all of these things, it's important that we collaborate. Next, train and support staff development, I think that's something that is critical and that we have, we as a community owe our staff doing this hard work, the opportunity to build skills and to be resourced appropriately. And finally, committing to performance measurement. We, you know, to Councilmember Carr's point, we need to do a better job of telling the successes of these shelter programs more than just at a one-off shelter workshop. So with that, I'm going to conclude, but I would like to first recommend one slight modification to the proposed resolution if you want to use the language I suggested. I'd like to suggest adding the words "work to" in front of letter C, which is the letter suggesting 24/7 operation, because I want to recognize that the shift to 24/7 operations will take some time in regards to staffing and funding, and I don't want to inadvertently constrict some existing funding commitments that we have. So with that, I will conclude and happy to answer questions or take any other comments.
Number of members, and I know I want to come back and ask some questions as well. Thank you. Councilmember Geta?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank you for putting together this workshop and making sure that we keep the issue of how we're effectively making a visible dent on the issue of homelessness here in our city. And I think for all of us, we see the impacts daily in our city, in every part of the neighborhoods. It didn't matter which town hall I went to over the last month, in my district, this was an important issue that folks brought up. And also the cost to the city. I mean, I think the conversation about what is this program cost and what are the costs outside of it. I mean, not only are the costs, every time an officer or one of our firefighters get called out for service on an issue with, that if there's a homeless person in need or even our-
Excuse me, whoever's phone is on, if you could please turn it off, which I appreciate it. Thank you.
As Councilman Carr brought up, you know, the issue of code enforcement with any kind of illegal dumping, there are costs. But more importantly, I think also, there are also costs to our health system, and how many folks are ending up in the health system, and I think that's why we've seen our local health providers engaged in this. So for one, and Emily, I want to thank you for this presentation, I do think that a lot of these points, the recommendations are important. Ensuring that we emphasize low barriers to access is an important tool, making sure that anybody who wants help, that we can get them started. Now, they may be all at a different capacity to help themselves, but if they want help, we want to help them get started regardless of what their barriers may be. And we do want a coordinated entry to making sure that we're better linking all of our needs. The thing, though, that I had asked to be brought forward in this conversation is the bullet point of the commitment to collaborate with other providers. And what I wanted to see here is, because I don't disagree with anything that you've put forward together, and I do understand that there are challenges with their federal restrictions for, particularly with the feds, on what we can and can't use, but what I'd like to know is, how can we work and collaborate with other providers? And particularly those that have a different model that has also shown success. In my district specifically, we have a number of folks who do this kind of work, Mercy Housing on Stockton Boulevard, but also over in, off of Folsom Boulevard, St. John's. And they, each one of those programs are different, but they've both shown a level of commitment of success. And I want to know how we can collaborate with providers like St. John's when, as I looked in the staff report, the number of supportive resources for women and children is limited in our city. There's a lot more for single men to go out and get support, but I see that there's a need there. So to me, I think that's the only thing that was missing in this staff report, in which I had asked the city manager and staff to come back with. So that's the question, how can we work with those providers that have shown success but have different restrictions as well? And again, this I think is important, but I think that we're missing that conversation there.
Sure. So I'll take a stab. So there's a couple of things related to the vast majority of funding that we use to support shelters, either administered through SHRA or administered to the city, were required to comply with these things. I don't think that precludes the council from using general fund money, which doesn't have restrictions for other models. So that's certainly an option. So if we wanted to support a program that didn't comply with Housing First or didn't comply with coordinated entry system or some of these other federal requirements, it would be precluded from the vast majority of funds, but it doesn't preclude you from choosing to use general funds for that. The challenge for staff is that oftentimes these funding sources are combined to make a project whole. And so trying to pull apart pieces and have some programs that operate a certain way and some programs that don't, but then having a collective way to report out will be challenging because we'd like to also lift up the report outs and be comparing apples to apples. But I recognize there's some oranges out there. And so I think that would be a decision for the council to either lay apart a certain pot of money or a certain policy framework for something that's outside of this recommendation, rather than I think trying to fit them into this.
I'm more of an orange guy than I am an apple guy, generally. Mandarin, to be specific. But, you know, I guess what I'd like to see, and again, this is all new, right? I mean, I commend you for piecing examples of where things have worked in other cities, and now we obviously know from our experience from our neighboring cities on how these models can work. But we're building this as we're going, so I understand that there's going to be apples and oranges. But as we're building this, let's not also restrict the ability to partner with other organizations. If we're moving forward in that way, let's figure out how to maximize any of the output from every one of our partners that are out there. This issue is so big that there's no way the city on alone can resolve it. And we do need to figure out, okay, what's the best way that we can actually make a physical dent in the issue? But I want to make sure we don't shut ourselves off to working with partners who have actually shown some results as well.
So can I, I want to turn it over to Vice Mayor a second, but I want to pick up on this, and I hope that since this is a workshop format, we can kind of draw out Councilmember Geta's suggestions and conversations a little bit more, because I'm not sure it's as clear as it can be. With more resources, I for one, am all for funding these other approaches that don't necessarily deal with the chronically homeless, but deal with people who are very much at risk, whether it be single moms who may be unstably housed, who are at risk of homelessness, there's the whole prevention, early intervention idea, I'm all for it. I think what I hope people get out of this workshop particularly today is a direction around what we do about our chronically homeless population. And in that instance, what's most revealing to me about Emily's presentation and the PowerPoint is that one slide in which it was 61% of the people, not 83%, have been homeless for a long time. And the statistics above that in the box, just remembering in my head now, where many more people in the triage shelter than in the traditional shelters have severe mental illness, have drug abuse problems, drug addiction problems, and have other even more serious life challenges. And I, it is apples and oranges, but it's all, we want to help everybody. This is a question today of what the existing resource base we have, and with some of the state money coming down, like the HEAP money, which does have these requirements that Emily has spoken about, do we want to have a standard for our shelters? That is a related but separate question, I think, from the one that you're raising, a very legitimate question about all the other, many other providers that are doing good work, how do we help them as well? But I want to make sure that we either get the buy-in or not today for how we address the plight of the people who have been on the streets for the longest, who are also the public safety challenges, the public health challenges, and the business challenge here, as well as a humanitarian challenge.
Mr. Mayor, I don't question, I mean, I agree with you, and I think that was my point, is that we're moving in that direction, and I think our experience with the winter triage shelter and the good work that your office and Councilmember Harris and, you know, who's been, you know, consistent about this at railroad, you know, is, has shown success. And I don't think we should discount that at all, because I do think that we've made some positive movement forward, and to do that, I'm just saying that as we move forward, acknowledging that success, let's not forget about how we-
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying. Because I do think that, I think, I without question think that we have seen some positive movement, and we could get to scale, because that is the big issue, right? It's how do we get to scale on the bigger issue?
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. I actually think the comment you just made was really helpful at refocusing us on the chronically homeless, the unsheltered, and we've been in this debate for so long. I actually started when Mayor Johnson was working on Stepping Stones, and, which was sort of a Safe Ground-type community with Steve Waters, who I saw here, that was ages ago, feels 2008 or '09, when I was, had first moved downtown and wanted to do something to help. So in some ways, it feels like Groundhog Day, but in other ways, the days have changed. We've moved further along, and I think our understanding of the complexity of the issue and our capacity to do something about it as a city has grown, because we've added staff who are extremely knowledgeable and competent, we've added resources, millions of dollars, we've added a debate between the city and the county and the state as to what are the proper roles of government. But when we talk about these things, I think the staff report was really good at keeping us focused. The resolution in the end, though, I think misses two things that I really hope that we can add to it. One is just repeatedly, in the preface to the resolution, it has it even in the staff report, that our goal is a Housing First approach, and that this is all within the context of people who get sheltered and housed have better outcomes. I think that there is no doubt in my mind that our whole sheltering approach should be through that lens. There is a debate in some aspects of the provider community about Housing First, people who don't want us to measure their outcomes, people who want to take the easiest to serve. But I think that if we're going to do our absolute responsibility, which is to work on the most difficult to serve, those models, low barrier, triage, taking the people who have multiple conditions that keep them from entering back into society and systems that can help them, has to be at the core of it. The second thing is that we don't capture in the resolution the fact that, and I bring this up repeatedly, but the federal government has abandoned us in many ways when it comes to shelters. They totally disinvested in shelters, and so now local governments are trying to step into that role. I know the mayor worked really hard on some state funding to help ease that, but it doesn't come without its own potential strings, and we'll talk about that later. But that, I would like a portion of this to acknowledge that the city needs to advocate with our federal representatives, our members of Congress and our senators for more federal resources. We have a little lever here with our resources to lift people. The state has a much bigger lever to lift people, but the federal government has a huge lever to lift people. And unless the federal government cares about the state of California, unless the federal government cares about people who are unsheltered and provides resources, we will only be plugging our fingers into a larger dike and trying to keep up with the leaks. We will never get ahead of the problem. And as much as we've put, particularly the mayor has put his heart and soul into this issue, I think unless we build more allies and get more help, we will never get ahead of where we want to be. So I think that has to be in there as well, our federal government affairs team, our city manager, and really orient around how we draw down those dollars. Otherwise, I think shelter and the way that we're doing it, trying to help people, I've seen it work. And I know we're counting maybe 150 people, 350 people, but when we look at the people who have constant needs, whether that's ambulance services, emergency room services, they have other things that we spend money on, they cost us as a society and as a city so much more, so why don't we help them with a little bit of prevention? That ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I think that it feels bad because we shouldn't have this responsibility as a city. It feels like this is somebody else's work. It feels like this is somebody else's work because other people have avoided doing their job. But we don't have a choice but to do what we can to help these people who are our citizens. And I think, you know, Eric maybe, maybe mentioned this, but our residents are demanding it.
Yes.
And we, we're like the pharmacist, you know? You may not be able to get to your doctor, but you can always walk up to the counter at Rite Aid and find out what you're supposed to be doing. And, you know, our constituents know how to find us, they know how to chase us, they know how to ask for things. And, you know, we have to be responsive, or guess what? They go find somebody else. And I think that the responsiveness to the impacts, to the desire to do the right thing, which is to help people, to lift people, to do the most difficult, has to be how we tackle this. And, you know, Mayor, you've been unabashed in your clarity, and I think dogged in your energy, but we don't really have a choice but to move forward in trying to crack this.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. I think your two suggestions, by the way, are consistent, very consistent with the resolution, both the housing-first philosophy and the, the recognition that we need to continue to be aggressive in seeking partnerships. I will say, while the federal government, not much good news coming out of DC lately, in Sacramento and at the state capitol, and we'll talk more about this tonight, the $500 million of HEAT funding, of which we're going to get our share if, if we choose to, is only the beginning. You know, you have a new administration coming in, and presuming, we don't know the outcome of the election, but if it is Lieutenant Governor Newsom, he has made it very clear that these sets of issues are going to be a policy and budgetary priority. And we will certainly work with him if he's the next governor in partnership to continue to build the capacity what we know works. And that's our, that's our objective here. But I think your two ideas, if you, when it's time to make the motion, when you included those two, I think they're
And those are great.
They're, they're right. Okay. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to assure my colleagues that I have eyes, I have ears, and I have a nose too. And I understand the impact that homelessness has on our city. That's not the issue for me. The goal that we set, well, the goal that the mayor set was that we get thousands of people off the street. I agree totally with that goal. Where I'm having a problem is jumping into the how, and not only the how, but jumping right into a specific how. Here's how we're going to do it. We're going to open shelters. And that's when it becomes important to look at the cost. If we said we spent $400,000 a month and we got 150 people off the street.
That's not
That's, that's $29,000 per person, per year. If we say we got 350 people off the street, that's $12,500 per person. The last, I looked at the impact of homelessness, it was $13 million it was costing the city, not counting the shelter. The last time I saw a city estimate, that comes up to almost $2,500 per person for the 5,000 people. We've done a lot in the last two years on this. We put a lot of money and a lot of energy into it. The result is the same or worse.
No, it's not.
So the question
Disagree, but please continue. Sorry.
Well, there are more people homeless today than there were when I got on the council of 3,500. There are at least 5,000 people out there.
We don't know that.
All I'm suggesting is that there may be alternatives to the shelter solution. If you've got $3,000 per person to play with, per, per month, there are other things that we could do to, to really get a handle on the problem. And I question whether or not the city should be involved in the shelter business. That's a different question than what you're asking. But whether or not we should be doing that, or if we should be relying on the nonprofits in the county to do it and providing them with resources. So we're spending an awful lot of money. I know everybody's jumped on this one solution, here's how we're going to do it. But with this much revenue involved in the homeless situation, there may be other things that could really help and move people from where they are, causing all of the damage that Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Gera pointed out. There may be other things that we could do to have a more immediate impact, because I don't think this is working. And my goal is, my goal would be, one, help people who want to help themselves. If somebody comes to us and they want help, they can't pay the rent or whatever, help those people. And people who don't want to help themselves, people who don't want to give up their drugs, don't want to give up their pit bulls, don't want to give up all the things that are going to prevent us from getting them off of addiction or whatever circumstance they're in, move them on. They can't camp here. They can't be in our parks. They can't be on our sidewalks. They can't be on our rivers. If they want help, we'll give them help. If they don't, move them on. That's my solution to the problem.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a, it's such a big topic, and it affects each of our districts differently, and it affects the individuals that are dealing with homelessness differently. My concern about this resolution is that it is very narrow, and it is focused on sort of one thing. And I have concerns about shelters. I've been, they're consistent about my distaste for the current shelter. I, I just, I think we could do better than that. To get into whether or not what we would do would be called a shelter or not, I think is semantics. I do think we need some low barrier things, but I won't support a resolution that says we will only do low barrier things, because I don't think that's the right approach either. So for example, as I think Councilmember Gera was trying very nicely to state, there are 56 beds open at St. John's right now. You spent a substantial amount of time in your presentation talking about things in the future and how we get there and scatter model and this and that. Those are all really good things, and probably the answer is not one, but many of those solutions. I spent my career before coming to council, working with foster youth and parolees. And I rarely met two that were exactly the same. And I think when you deal with human beings that are facing barriers to success in life, that the best way to address them is on a one-to-one basis. And when you create cookie cutter approaches, things like "all" or "must," you fail people on the margins that have already been marginalized. So I don't like a resolution that dictates funding moving forward that is so limiting. I want to help St. John's. I'm going to be, I'm, I think I've been very candid about this in the past. I'll keep saying, as long as I sit at this dais, I will say this. They help women and children. It is a very specific, targeted group with great need. They have a very, very long wait list, hundreds of people. They have 56 open beds tonight. Those beds were open last night, and the night before that, and the night before that, and the night before that. They've been open. They need funding. We have money. I think we should fund those beds. That would take 56 people off the street tonight, or tomorrow, or the night after that, or whenever we can do it. Are they the most chronically homeless? No. Are they men? No. But are they homeless? Yes. And there are women and children. And so I don't think we should do anything that limits our financial opportunities to not be able to do that. I think we should have already done it. As you know, I tried to bring this months ago. But we wanted to have it as a larger conversation, which from a policy standpoint makes a lot of sense and is the right thing to do. But today, my goal leaving this meeting is for my colleagues to agree that if there are 56 open beds for women and children in the city, in Councilmember Gera's district, and he just said that he thinks that's a great program and he supports them, and I think the same thing, and I am the only woman elected to this city of Sacramento, and I am telling you that for homeless women and children, we need to fund those beds, I hope my colleagues will agree. And that when we leave this chamber today, whether it's this afternoon or tonight, that we are looking for funding for 56 beds for women and children in the city of Sacramento who are currently sitting on a 300-person waitlist. So that is my number one goal out of this meeting. I, too, have some reservations around shelters, but I am willing, because the mayor works so hard and cares so much about this, to have a conversation that's ongoing around how we can do that better. I know he wants to do it better, too. We have to start somewhere. I'm interested in the conversation about where we're going from here, about how we do shelter that doesn't include porta potties, about how we do shelter that has plumbing and heating and air conditioning and a kitchen and food and not costing $400,000 a month. I don't want to get in an argument about how many people have been helped and how many have not. People are being helped, but there are a lot more people who need help. We don't have enough money to help them all. But we should use this money to help as many as we can in the best ways possible. And 56 open beds tonight, unfunded, that have been open for months, is not doing the best that we can do. So I'm going to ask my colleagues, in anything that moves forward today, resolution or otherwise, that we ask this city to fund St. John's Women's Shelter and their 56 beds, and move some women and kids off of a waitlist and into an opportunity to change their lives. And I also would ask this council to be careful about terms like "housing first." For most of the population, that might work great. In my experience working with individuals, there is nothing that works for everyone. So we have to give ourselves room to support organizations and partners that are doing things outside of one static type of model service. I don't think shelters are going to solve this problem alone. I also don't think we can solve it just with St. John's. I don't think we can solve it with any one thing, just like foster youth. They don't, everyone does, can't survive in a group home. Everyone can't survive in one environment. We do need to take care of people who can't take care of themselves. We have to help more than just the people who come to us. There are people who don't have the wherewithal to come to us. There are people who are so addicted or dealing with so much mental health or so much trauma that they could physically never seek out the help. That doesn't mean we leave them somewhere. We have to find solutions there. And I think that is the population you're focused on, and I applaud that, and we need to do it. And it's a, a hard and difficult group to get to, and we need resources. But I don't think we do that and not help women and children who are homeless in our city. So my hope is, that's my, my ask of folks in this, in this chamber tonight with a vote, that you will support moving forward to help women and children in our city, as I think Councilmember Gera has pleaded, and I am now pleading. Thank you.
Can I just add one small thing? It doesn't fully answer your question, but just since I just left the county and as a preview for tonight, when you'll be discussing the same thing the county discussed, they did pass a staff's recommendation for the HEAT, for the funding for the HEAT proposal, which does include funds that will, to expand family sheltering programs. So that is a component of the HEAT. It probably doesn't get to the full bed count that you're talking about at St. John's, but there will be new funding through the HEAT program for family beds.
Yeah, but Emily, all due respect, I've spoken to you and the city manager for over six months, maybe, we may be coming up on a year. And every time I have asked to fund St. John's shelter, and I've been kind not to bring it up at the council because it's a public venue, but every time I bring up St. John's, I'm asked to wait for the next round. I was asked to wait for Whole Person. Then I was asked to wait for this conference. Then I'm, now I'm being asked to wait for HEAT, and I'm done waiting. So I will not vote on this resolution. I will not vote in favor of this resolution unless someone tells me today, the city managers who I'm looking to, that we are going to at least talk to St. They have already submitted to you and to the city manager a proposal for how much it would cost to house women and children in those 56 beds. Where is that proposal today? Because I was asked to not bring that up until we had this meeting. So here we are, and I am bringing it up.
Okay. I want to, if I may, if I may.
Mayor, one second.
Yeah.
If you want me to vote on this resolution, then tell me how we serve St. John's with a yes vote on this resolution. Because my understanding is, this funding, under this resolution, goes only to a housing-first model, and that would mean they wouldn't be eligible. And so if your ask of me is wait for the next go-round of funding through HEAT or the county or something else, this is the end for me. A year of fighting and waiting in the background is enough. Now I'm going to ask for it here, and I'm asking my colleagues to please support that, because there are over 300 women and children sitting on a waitlist, hoping for one of those beds that have been empty while I waited for the next funding source.
So I appreciate any member with passion who takes a stand, but I think there's some real misunderstandings here, and I want to get back to the essence of this. There is no money, city money, on the table here today. I don't know what money colleagues may be talking about, because there is none. Let's be clear. The city set aside $5 million in my first year as mayor, out of our general fund on a one-time basis, to fund a variety of, of projects around homelessness. And we put some of that money and some subsequent money into the triage shelter on Railroad Avenue. But after, I think it was about June, I, I committed to my colleagues that the only way that that triage shelter would in fact continue would be if I or any of you could raise the private dollars in order to continue its funding. And that's exactly what I have done. And I'm not back here today saying, I don't support this resolution unless you continue to fund the triage shelter. That's not what it is, it's issue here. If you want to make a case for St. John's, which is a very compelling program, by the way, and I think does deserve our support as we marshal more resources, might be a good conversation for November 7th or afterwards, then I'm, I'm all in. But this is the wrong resolution to make that stand.
Well, Mayor, let me just say this. You were in on a series of emails. I am not the person who conflated St. John's with this resolution. Wait, let me finish.
I didn't, though.
Okay. But staff did. And staff, so I, I asked to have a general fund conversation with my colleagues to fund St. John's, and I was told by staff, right, city manager, that I could not do that until this hearing today. So I am not going to accept as an answer that this is not the right moment, because I asked to have this conversation separately. And I understand that it wasn't you that said that, but city staff did, and they asked me to bring it forward today. And they said I could not ask for funding for St. John's until we had this meeting.
Okay.
And so I'm here, and I am asking, and I'm not asking for the money that you went and fundraised for the shelter. I've been vocal that even though I don't support that shelter model, I support you, and you raised that money, and so that needs to go that direction. But I'm not going to pass or vote for a citywide resolution that now limits what we can do for St. John, and at the same time, have everybody tell me wait for this date or that date, or maybe Measure U, or maybe HEAT. No, we have a general fund. The ask from St. John's, by the way, is less than $1 million for a year to serve 56 women and children. That is less than the cost of the shelter for two months. So I, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask. I was told to wait till today to ask my colleagues. Today I'm asking my colleagues.
Okay. So, go ahead, Howard.
So Councilwoman Ashby, you're correct. I, I in fact asked her to, to wait until this conversation was had at a policy level before deciding, moving forward with funding shelters. So that being said, we have received a proposal from St. John's, and we do have on the calendar a tour of the facility to find out more about the facility, and we will be bringing something back to this council outside of the, the state money that's coming forward.
Well, Mr. City Manager, that is, I guess that's the question here, because you and I are going to go tour that facility.
Correct, on the 20th, later this month.
Exactly. And, and as much as I've encouraged others, folks, to go tour that facility, does this resolution limit the city's ability to support St. John's?
Does not. It does not.
That's, does not. So if we vote today.
Emily, does it? Limit the city's ability to potentially fund beds for St. John's?
Very simple answer.
Resolution limited it anyway.
Very simple question, which I think should have a very simple answer.
Agreed.
I'm not sure if the city attorney might want to weigh in. I mean, as it's drafted, it does say city investments, including those administered by SHRI, because they administer some funds on behalf, would be used for these things. So I'm not sure if that, I don't know legally if that precludes you from doing other things outside of, of the funds that come to my office, or, I, I don't, I don't know. I'm looking at the city attorney to see if.
And just as you're answering that, city attorney, two things. One, she's the homeless coordinator, so if it has to be outside of the homeless coordinator's office, then that's ridiculous. And two, we helped pay for that shelter that you say you want to go tour, which is fine, but we helped pay for it. We, the last time we made a big investment in St. John's was to help build the shelter that we now want to tour before we decide if we're going to help fund. And we did, it just, it, everything just, it, everything is a delay, so.
Hey, I, I hear you. Jeff, no. You're getting a chance to testify when, this is the city council.
I think you did that, it's just from Sacramento forward.
Excuse me.
Information.
Excuse me.
Okay.
So can I, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I believe that on any given Tuesday, staff can bring something forward for this council to consider, and outside of the, the eligibility requirements under HEAP and other state funding. This is, we're talking about general funds.
Turn on your mic, please.
Howard, Mr. City Man, I heard you say that this would not preclude us from making decisions to support entities like St. John's. And then I heard Emily refer to the city attorney. I'm sorry. I'm just saying, so it would seem to me, at the very least, we need to clarify what it is we're doing and what limitations it would put on us. And I would expect our city manager to be able to answer that question, as you did, and I want to believe in, in what you said, as it would not preclude us. But I think that there should be some coordination, so when we have a statement come out from, you know, the gentleman who leads our city, I mean, as a non-elected, but as a city manager, when, when that comes out, I would expect Emily, you to concur, as well as the, the city attorney, particularly if it's in a public forum like this. Because that's, this is a very important issue. It's very emotional. It's a sensitive issue. There's a lot of things at stake. Our mayor has done a yeoman's job, and we, I think all of us want to support the direction that he's given us. But we need to have clear and a definitive, you know, statements come out from our professionals so we know when we make a decision, we have confidence that we can do the things that we believe are important to us as well. So I, I just wanted to make that statement.
The resolution itself is very clear, and Susanna, our city attorney, it says "should", it does not say "must." It's guidance for how we want to operate our shelters around how to help the chronically homeless people in the community. It doesn't negate or affect our ability and our, and/or our willingness to invest in any other approach. It speaks to how we should, should, address the plight of the people on the street that Steve Hansen talked about, in terms of what he deals with in, in his district constituents, Jeff Harris, all of us deal with in our districts, in your districts. It's all my district. It's a should, and it doesn't preclude in any way, Councilmember Ashby, you, Councilmember Gera, bringing forward a, a, a resolution with a funding request in the resolution to fund St. John's or any other program that you think is worthy. And I would be inclined to, always to work with you and to help St. John's, especially if we can identify the resources. As I've said, I've, I've funded this triage in the last half of 2018 through private funding. But I'm open to your requests, but not to hang this up, because it doesn't preclude what you're asking for. Okay, let's go to the other members. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a difficult conversation, and I think that there's a lot of misconception about what homelessness is, basically. There are many populations to serve with very unique needs. There are women and children that are ably served by St. John's. There's transition-age youth. There are homeless veterans. The bulk of the population living on the streets, certainly chronically, are mentally ill. That's the fact of the matter, that this is a mental health crisis we're dealing with. More than a homelessness crisis, it's about mental health exacerbated by extreme addiction. That's 60% of the people living outdoors, and I see it every day in the River District and throughout District 3, which has probably fully half of the homeless population in the city, in District 3. That's the long and the short of it. And if we're going to see a reduction in impacts to our districts, we're going to have to deal with that population. That population happens to be mostly male, mostly single, but there are family components, too. We have many providers in this city that are all deserving of funding. St. John's is a good one. Volunteers of America Family Shelter is a good one. There, there are so many out there, and the city makes an attempt to help and to fund them all. The fact of the matter is that much of the public money that we try to avail ourselves of is constrained by a housing-first model. That's the long and the short of it. And if we want those dollars to attack this, this problem head-on, we're going to have to admit that those dollars can use, be used only and best in a housing-first model. That won't address the entire population in Sacramento. There are people that I call the low-hanging fruit, Larry, to get to your issue, people who are able to help themselves. But that's not the bulk of the population. That's a small part. My guesstimation is 10% or less are the people who will ask for help and be able to move forward if you, if you fund help for them. The bulk of the population are so degraded that they cannot help themselves, and they will not ask for help, and they will reject help if you offer it to them. What we found at the triage shelter is that after becoming stable for two to four months, people start to envision a change in the possibilities for their future. And it takes that kind of investment in these people with that level of difficulty of struggle to be able to help them. And if we don't address that population, and rather aggressively, we will never see a reduction of impacts of homelessness on our streets. We just won't. This resolution, as written, I read it the same way the mayor does, does not preclude investment in programs that work with people like the people at St. John's, that can already envision a better future for themselves and need help to achieve that. Those programs are just as important as, say, a triage shelter. But if we only help those populations, we won't deal with the sheer numbers of people who live on the streets, and certainly the bulk of the impacts that we see in our community that, that our constituents want us to deal with. The hard work is being done by Volunteers of America. That's the long and the short of it. It's tough work. It's really difficult work, and it's costly work, Mr. Carr, but it's work that has to be done. And if we don't address it, then our city will further degrade with all the impacts that you see, that the homeless, homeless wreak on our city. Another thing that people don't realize, and I really want to drive this home, the homeless population is not a benign population. There are a lot of criminals amongst, amongst the people who live outdoors. There is a tremendous amount of crime perpetrated by the homeless against the homeless, by the homeless against regular citizens through breaking into their homes and cars. And there's a lot of crime perpetrated by people who are housed against the homeless. The homeless end up being the victims most of the time. This problem is so big and so deep and so nuanced, no one solution will fit all. We need to fund all of them, and we need to get enough metrics that we understand where the money is best spent. St. John's is a great program, and, and I certainly support funding them. I voted for the funding round last time for St. John's. That's a small targeted population. We want to help everybody, but it's, it's a numbers game, and if we don't get into the capacity of dealing with hundreds of people with mental infirmity on the streets, we're not going to see any change in the city of Sacramento. I think we should support this resolution. I, I also understand, housing first is not the only answer. There are many answers to this problem, because there are many populations that have disparate needs that need to be met. And that's the long and the short of it. We should move full steam ahead on any solution that we can find. Triage works, St. John's works, VOA Family Shelter works. You know, most of our providers are really excellent at what they do. TLCS is another great provider that does a huge amount of work with the known mentally infirm. All of these programs need help. All of them need our attention. We need to move forward with all of them, and I see this resolution does no harm, and I'll, I'll certainly support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Emily, I just want to be clear on the recommendations. Emphasize low barrier access, operate 24/7, commit to coordinated entry, incentive housing, case management services, commit to collaboration with other providers, train and support staff. Are, are these recommendations based on what we have learned from the triage center? Or, or something else on top of that?
I think, yes, they're, but they're also based on the housing-first approach. I mean, the vice mayor suggested we implicitly say that, but these are, and I agree with that, but these are the core components of housing-first. And, and some of them, they are laid out in, for example, state statute about the funding that, that we may be receiving from the state. And certainly, these are things that we have strove, strive to do at the railroad shelter. We have some, certainly some improvements we made at railroad shelter. I 100% agree with Councilmember Ashby on that. But these are the concepts that have driven our, our aspirations for that shelter, and that other programs have, have also embraced.
And, and the reason I ask you the question, because one of the recommendations, which I support completely, talks about a collaborative approach with our providers. And so if we talk about a collaborative approach, when you talk about training, for instance, that could be a very effective process, rather than each provider having to do training on their own, if we had a collaborative, collaborative approach to training. Is that kind of where you're trying to go with this?
Yes, and you just totally stole my thunder for tonight, but I really appreciate that, because one of the, the things that I think all of us, including shelter providers, would recognize is that we're not a system of shelters in our community. We're a bunch of shelters who operate in the sort of same geography. And so people have to knock on different doors, and everybody uses different tools, and everybody uses, you know, has different training protocols. One of the investments we are recommending as part of the overall state expenditure plan coming through steps forward would be common training, common protocols, common policies and documentation, so that, and, and it is our responsibility to support those, those providers. And this is not a fault of the providers. They haven't had access to resources to, to lift them up. And so, yes, that is 100% one of the things that I would envision as something we want to strive for all our shelters.
Okay. And so that kind of helps me a lot as far as my support. I want to support my colleague, because I do think that everybody's not going to fall under this umbrella to the seven recommendations that we're making. There are also shelters that run their business totally differently than the recommendations that are on here. And so I think the question was answered earlier, that doesn't, that doesn't preclude us from supporting and funding them because they do their business differently than the way we're, we're putting this resolution together, correct?
Yeah, and that's what I'm hearing. And just for Councilmember Warren, just to clarify, the reason I was a little bit hesitant to answer and ask the city attorney, because this is a, a policy resolution. I've never done one of these, but I do understand there's some other policy resolutions the council has adopted in other, some other forms. So I just wanted to be clear that, that this was, this was being thought of in the same way those other policy resolutions. But I do agree, and I, I think that the city manager has confirmed, I'm assuming, that this wouldn't preclude us.
Well, that's, I mean, the question was asked to the city attorney. Does the language of the resolution preclude?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just in the line of, we, some of us have been waiting a very long time.
Okay.
I'd just like to get through it, Mr. Gera and Ms. Ashby, if possible. Thank you.
Okay.
I think the question was, does the language preclude?
As I understand it, no, it wouldn't, but I, I would like confirmation from.
There's an easy potential amendment to this. Maybe it'll come up with one of this.
Okay.
Here in a minute, that I think will resolve it pretty easily.
And I'll let that go. Sorry. So the last thing, couple things. In our look at places like San Francisco and San Diego, we've looked at their best practices, and we're bringing that forward in this resolution, correct?
Yes.
And we've seen that they've taken these seven recommendations and moved forward with these recommendations, which I would say help 80% to 85% of those who are collaborating with them, but there are also others that are outside of that group that are also having success in, in housing and sheltering the homeless.
Yeah, I mean, certainly in all of the communities that we're aware of, there are sheltering programs that exist outside of this paradigm, and I'm, I'm certain they are successful or serve other people in different ways. So yes, this is not meant to say, I, I don't know if I could with certainty say that those communities have entirely transformed every single one of their program providers. I would be surprised if that was the case.
So, so the last thing I just want to say is, when I do the math based on our current shelter of our youth.
I'm sorry, what?
Your number say 2% of the 14 or 1500 beds.
Yes.
That we have. And so that's approximately 30 beds, if I'm correct.
It's 32, I believe, yeah.
Right. And so when I take a look at how many beds we have for our youth compared to how many youth I know are on the street and/or couch hopping or other things, I think it's very important for us to make sure that we expand the capacity for our youth so that they don't end up with a lifestyle of homelessness because they got started at an early age. And so for me, that's got to be as big as everything else that we're talking about, whether it be veteran population, women and children. Our youth, to me, is one of the most important things, because I see too many kids right now who can't go to school, who can't graduate, who are unsettled because they're moving around and they have no place stable to stay. And so when I look at this number of what we have to house our youth, it's an unacceptable number for me.
I, I completely agree with you, and one of the things you're going to see tonight is that through the HEAP program, one of the requirements is that we expend at least 5% of all the funds on youth programs. We are, we currently have recommended more than that, and, and mostly to do what you're suggesting, Councilmember Jennings, is to stand up additional youth-specific sheltering programs. While youth can, when we use the term youth, we generally mean legal adults, so they technically could go to any of the adult shelters, but we recognize they often don't for very good reasons. So, yes, part of, part of the conversation tonight will be a recommendation to allocate a, a chunk of the, the forthcoming state money for shelter beds for youth. So, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't think I would have to come back around, but I, I'm happy to come back around. I would like first to move the resolution with a couple amendments that I suggested, and just to clarify in direction to staff that this doesn't preclude other opportunities, but I feel.
Do you want to put that in the, do you want to put that in the resolution itself?
Well, Mayor, what I was, I mean, I've been here for six years now. I know as long as we have a resolution, it just kind of guides us. This is not stone. It's not being etched in marble. And, and we've often gone above and beyond, but I'd like to make my comments before I answer your question. This, this is a prelude to a food fight, and I think, Mayor, you said, we, we don't have any money in front of us right now, so in a way, this is a precursor to the food fight, and, and it's, it's ugly. And I, but I get it, because people are hungry for resources to serve this population. But what I also know is that we haven't been very disciplined in the past, at least prior to a couple years ago, in how we measure outcomes. And, and we put money after worthwhile causes, but got very little for it. Now that we're actually measuring what we're getting for our money, we're sort of quibbling, well, is 350 people worth it, or 150 people worth it? And I find that really distressing for a variety of reasons, is we can't judge just by that number how hard to serve they are, and the quantity of resources they need to have their life turned around, their ability to do it for themselves. That one number doesn't tell us the story of that person. And I think that's sort of the essence of why this issue is so dang hard. But when it comes to St. John's, I love Michelle. I love St. John's. I was one of the families, as a kid, who would have been in her shelter. It is not lost on me the important work that they do, or that I, my life was changed for the better because of a place like St. John's. But I'll tell you, the shelter I was in was low barrier. And Michelle, as much as I love you, you're very selective in who and how you treat those families. And I think that's good, because your program has a particular notion and theory of change behind it. I think it's not exclusive to the theory of change that we're trying to advance through a more elaborate focus on the chronically homeless. I don't think that they have to argue with one another. I don't think they have to be considered zero-sum. I think that we have to do both. And we have done both. We put $600,000 into St. John's just a couple years ago. I'm happy to continue to entertain how we support programs like that, but I'm also not going to say housing first, serving those who have been left behind, who have been written off, and who constantly are left to die on the streets and fester in emergency rooms or in tents, that we shouldn't double down and try to figure out how to help them. For the love of God, that is our job. And they may be hard, and they may not know how to stand up, they may not know how to ask for help, they may not know how to stay and help, but we have to commit ourselves to not giving up on them, because everybody else has given up on them. And, and there's a variety of answers here, but I will not say that we should leave them behind to help someone else, because we don't have to leave some people behind. to help someone else because we don't have to leave some people behind only to help other people. I just don't accept that as the notion and the theory of how we as a city do this. I just don't. And in the end, I get very passionate because I believe that we are trying to do good and we need to do it well, but we have to stick together and we have to work together. And so I gladly move this with those amendments. I don't think it precludes anything because guess what? Every Tuesday, we change our mind. Some other people will come up here and decide they didn't like what we did, and, you know, every Tuesday, we're threatened with that because people say they're going to get rid of us, recall us, you know? But this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to do good. And Ms. Ashby, I respect your passion. Mr. Guerra, I respect your passion. St. John's or other programs like it, I think, are going to be taken care of. I just don't think that they want to engage in Housing First and low barrier options, but that's what we're talking about. So that's my motion.
Okay, this has been moved with the two suggestions you made in a, quote, "direction to staff" that nothing precludes. Councilmember Ashby, you're next. You may want to.
Does it also include, though, the addition of work to in front of C, which was my original?
Which is what?
Okay, just want to, I asked for a clarification of what.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Councilmember Ashby, let's move through a little quickly if we can here, please.
I can't promise you that, Mayor. Sorry. I wish I could.
Okay.
I will try.
Okay.
So first of all, you suggested that maybe one option was that we wait for HEAP. I think, as you know, HEAP is actually precluded from being used for St. John's because HEAP, the organization that is putting HEAP forward, that's in this resolution, it actually says in here that according to BCHS, which is the Business Consumer Services and Housing Agency, right, that HEAP for similar sheltering and housing activities requires all programs funded under HEAP to be in compliance with Housing First principles, which means I can't wait for HEAP because when HEAP money comes, they won't be eligible. So that's one more time that I've been asked to wait, that again, the information that I'm reading in our resolution says that funding couldn't be used for purposes of St. John's. Is the resolution wrong, or?
No, and I apologize. What I just said is that the county will be expanding family shelters. I didn't mean to imply that it would go to St. John's. I was just implying there will be an expansion of shelter capacity for families.
Under HEAP funds, is what you said?
Yes, yes.
Which excludes St. John's.
As they currently operate, yes, it does.
And have for many, many years.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So that's problem number one, is you guys can kind of start to see what I'm up against here, right? Every time I ask and another funding source is suggested, it then dissipates. So I have a couple of questions. One is, the city attorney, who was chimed in here for a little bit, had a recommendation on how we could broaden this language a little bit in this resolution to make sure that we weren't limiting ourselves so much. I would love to hear her. I understand there is a motion on the table and that that motion does not want to entertain this modification, but I would like to hear it.
Hear what it is.
Counsel, I would suggest to make it potentially capture everything that this council has been talking about. In subsection E of the resolution, excuse me, yes, in subsection E of the resolution, that you add the words, "in addition to the use of other funds, including general funds," comma, and then you continue on the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness and.
I'm sorry, where are you starting here?
Subsection E of your resolution, in order to ensure that.
E, okay.
In order to ensure that the resolution actually captures as broad authority and direction to staff as possible to.
Say it again, please.
I would recommend that you add the words in front of the United States Interagency Council. You add the words, "in addition to the use of other funds, including general funds," comma, and then continue on with the remainder of that statement. And then I would suggest striking the words "and embraces the Housing First approach" because the Housing First approach only applies to the HEAP funding. And that's already contained in subsection F.
E.
Mayor, could I just, since I made the motion?
Go ahead. You can, I have an opinion, but go ahead.
Having worked for a long time with the particular provider in question, largely they do not want federal funds because of the strings that come with those monies, even the county monies. And so I think we're only talking about general fund. And Madam City Attorney, I very much respect you. We're setting a policy here, but this policy is not exclusive. And I don't know that it will make one iota of difference if we amend it in that way. It might make some people feel better. There's no money on the table at the moment, and I don't think that it changes what we do with our capital funding or other things, but I do know that those federal monies have been rejected by the provider in question because of the strings that come, so it's not even relevant.
Yeah, but I would just say, I would not object to the addition because I don't think it changes, unless Emily disagrees, I don't think it changes the import of the actual resolution on the other side of the page. It really doesn't. And so if it helps us get through this difficult discussion today, we maintain this direction when it comes to how we seek to serve the people who are most chronically homeless and mentally ill and dealing with substance abuse. It essentially gives a nod to the idea that if we have the money, that we might want to invest in other approaches as well. And I think that's okay. It's not the way I would write it. I like the Housing First model personally, but I think removing it in this way does not send any kind of a negative signal because of what's clear on the other side of the page. That would be my view, Mr. Motion Maker and Mr. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, if I could go back to my comments? It's fine. I think the motion maker has made it clear he doesn't want to.
No, no, he hasn't. We're having, I'm trying to help you get him to agree to it. Go ahead.
If somebody wants to make another motion, I, not seeing it here, obviously, that's in the background, so I don't, whatever is the will of the council, I just, in the end, we're arguing over something that is just semantic.
Okay, just for purpose, so you don't want to take it as of now?
It's fine. I'm happy to take it. I don't think it actually does anything.
So he just, so that's right, and it may not. So it does no harm, so then the Vice Mayor will accept the friendly amendment seconded by Councilmember Garrison. Now she's accepted the amendment, so now your comments go forward with whatever you would like.
Thank you.
Yes.
To the motion maker and second.
Good.
And also thank you to the mayor. I do have two additional questions, and one is for you, Mayor.
Ooh.
My understanding on this resolution is that, I sound so excited, is that it gives us the opportunity to move forward. I, like Councilmember Carr, I'm a little concerned about shelters, but this doesn't define what shelter looks like. And I've worked with you on this enough to know that we haven't hit what you want your standard of shelter to be yet either. Is it your thought that that is part of the conversation to come, that what a shelter looks like is part of the conversation to come? Or are you suggesting that a vote?
No, no.
Yes, on this means that we're going to do more of what we already have?
No, that, well, I know what I would like to do. We are looking, I've been very clear, and the Bee and others have reported this, we are looking for other sites to be able to replicate some version of the Railroad Avenue Trias Shelter, but we've been looking very closely as well at the San Diego model of the sprung shelter, which would not require a built warehouse facility. And so at the appropriate time, when we have identified sites and we are making progress, I would come back to the city council with a funding recommendation and specific site or sites and ask the council to approve that. But you're not committing to that vote in any way in this resolution.
That's my question because I want to be able to support the resolution, especially now that I believe that the barrier has been lifted that precluded me from being able to fight for St. John's, but I'm not prepared tonight to vote on the shelter model.
You're not being asked to.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was clear for the other folks to.
Give me a few weeks.
Who mentioned their concern with it, then we can have another fun conversation then. And then this is my last question, and this one is for you, City Manager. Clearly, tonight, we are going to adopt this resolution, and it doesn't preclude St. John's from being funded later. We obviously can't use the HEAP funding, but we could use another funding. What do I need to do? I mean, I've been here a minute, too. The longest minutes I've been here. Eight years, and I know that I can't help her until we take a vote. What do I have to do to get that vote in front of this council so that we can tell St. John's whether we're going to help them serve 56 women and children or not?
I think for starters, Councilmember Ashby, maybe you could join us for this tour in the next week and a half or so, and then have a conversation about what that support looks like, because there was a proposal sent to us that I have some questions about.
I'm happy to join you on a tour. I've been to St. John's many, 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 many times, have dropped women off there who were pregnant. I have picked women up there. I have been there to visit with women. My own daughter has been in the childcare center with other children. I am extremely familiar and very comfortable with the site, comfortable enough to leave my own three-year-old daughter there while I participated in events with you all. So I personally don't have a need to see her shelter. I've seen it. We paid for it. I think it's fantastic. Trusted my own most precious commodity, my little girl, to that center. But if you're saying you need me to be there to give some level of comfort to the city, then I'm happy to make time in my schedule to do so and to tell you what my perspective is on St. John's. But after that, then, so like next week, can it be on the council if we're going? Can it be the week after the visit?
We don't have money. Where's the, what money are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting we look at general fund money. It's only $750,000. That's it. For a year to serve 56 women and children. I would love to have that conversation, that vote, after we visit the site. And I don't mean months after we visit the site. I want to know if we can do this.
You want me to, or you want to answer that? Look, I'm going to be real honest, and it may.
I mean, Mayor, I think the city manager should answer because it's a funding question.
So as part of the funding question, I want to make sure that we get through tonight with this resolution, but I think if we look at this in the terms of midyear as we come back and look at the funding available, and we can carve out dollars for this council to consider to support this program.
Okay, when would that be, Howard?
Laney, or you? Late January?
Here.
Midyear.
Midyear moves a lot. We've done midyear in December. We've had a lot of midyears over time. So now, so now January.
That would be the latest.
So that's a whole, that's a long way stretch from when we first started, and I'm super uncomfortable with that because I've already waited so long. Last year at midyear, we were having this conversation, and I was asked not to bring it forward then. So I just don't know how many midyears and measure use and HEAP fundings. And for that matter, I would have fought the mayor harder over the $5 million that we gave him the first go-around in his first year. I would have asked for a car.
It was brand new.
Yeah. It would have been easier to beat him up then when he was new, so.
Did we get an outside date, though?
Yeah, at the latest.
Outside date, Howard?
Midyear, at the latest.
January.
Okay. Midyear is the answer, okay?
Okay, so no later than January.
No later than January.
Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Thanks, Mayor. Not sure I want to enter this one.
Well, go ahead.
I actually just have a couple of brief things. I'm going to support the resolution as amended. Kind of want to follow up on something Mr. Jennings said. And I supported the original, what, $600,000 for St. John's. I think it's a great program. It's a discussion that we should have in the context of the budget as well. I think that's the policy that this council has made, whether it's midyear or the regular budget process. So I'd look forward to that conversation. One thing that we really have not had a discussion about, as we've talked about homeless issues over the last number of years, are transition age youth. This was brought up by two of my council colleagues here, and we have approximately 350 to 400 people in that age group who are homeless, and we have done nothing for them. So what I would like to do on the motion is, and I'm not sure what the language is, but just note that this should cover various, I don't know if it's a cohort, or various age, subpopulations, age groups that are including but not limited to. We can say women and children, and we can also say transition age youth. I just want to make sure we put that marker down. I've been working with the city manager. We have some ideas about how to do some of that, which hopefully, within a couple of months here, we can bring to the council as ideas, not general fund money, but some other, trying to be creative about some things. So I would ask that, you know, we provide direction to Emily to come up with, I guess that would be G?
H.
H, rather.
It actually might be I because I think the new A becomes Housing First.
However it is, but that we add language saying that we want to include different subgroups, because I want to make sure we put a stake in the ground on that. Okay? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Another friendly amendment. Friendly, friendly. You know, I. Yeah. Okay. Include, I'm not done yet. I'm sorry. I'm not going to include that as we, I'm not sure what the language is, as we attack the, as we meet the challenge of homelessness, that we not, well, it's not priority because I don't know that should be priority one over the other, but that women and children and transition age youth are included in our outreach efforts or something like that. We can leave it up to you, but you get the message. Otherwise, you know, we have, I mean, it's pretty interesting, and I want to note something. Mr. Hanson and I were both in Brooklyn on the study mission, and I spent also an extra three days in New York. It was pretty interesting because we didn't see any homeless people as we walked around, or very, very few, considering that we were in, you know, one of the largest cities in the world. And we asked about it and said, you know, how many people do you have in your homeless population? The answer was 50,000, but they're all sheltered and in some kind of program coming forward one way or another. And the difference that it made in the community, I think, was pretty remarkable. So I know that the mayor has talked about this, and I want to support that. It's a little bit crass, but I want to support the idea of volume on this. I mean, I think to get to where we need to go, we need to really think about solutions that are as broad as possible while being deep as well. We need to do both those things. It's very difficult. I think the, I'm excited that your data shows that we're at the same level, more or less, as a scattered site initiative of the county, because those are very, what, five to six people per house? And I think it was 75 altogether that they're looking at.
At full occupancy. I'm not sure if they're there yet.
At full occupancy.
They're not there yet.
Right, but I think that moving forward, and this kind of addresses Mr. Warren's question as well, as we think about how to tweak and evolve the structure that we have, the model that we have, I think we can continue to get better at it as we learn going forward. But I think we have to stick with the idea that there are so many folks out on the street that we need to get to that volume piece of it. So I'm very supportive of this. I think the Housing First model is good. There are other models, and I'm sure we will have the funding discussion. Otherwise, Ms. Ashby may never vote with us again, but, you know, if you want to, that's the way it's going to be, that's the way it's going to be. So I would look forward to that discussion when we hit the budget part in midyear, and I'm going to support this motion with the amendments.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got no problem with the recommendations, especially with the changes, because they address the issue that I'm concerned about, helping people who are seeking help. And women and children fall into that category. Though this is a council policy, and as far as I'm concerned, the council can change it at any time, so it's not a huge issue to me. As a council, though, we do need to address Councilmember Ashby's concern, and that is, how do you get something to counsel? And I don't think the answer is asking the city manager. He works for us, so we're going to have to come up with a policy to address that. I like the mayor's template from a couple of weeks ago where he directed staff to help him draft an ordinance or a resolution and bring that resolution back to council for debate and vote. So I kind of like that process, but maybe it won't work in all instances. The reason I'm concerned about the dollars is because we're spending a lot of money, and the results that we get for that are important. And if we're not getting the results, then we should look at alternatives, things that we could do with that money. We could almost put people up at the Sawyer Hotel for what we're spending on all of the impacts. And if we're not considering that, if we're just single-mindedly focused on providing on providing shelter as the solution, then I think we might be shortchanging ourselves. For example, if you accept Councilmember Harris's notion that 60% of the people are mentally ill, that means that we could get 40% of the people off the street right now who are not mentally ill, who just need some support. And with the 60% that are left, I'm not sure if shelter is the right thing to do with them. I think there's another solution laying in there, out there somewhere to deal with that, that percentage of the population that's mentally ill. And it's been suggested that we help everyone. Everyone would like to do that, but the resources never seem to stretch long enough to do it. So, we have to prioritize. And those are the basis of my concerns. Looking at alternatives, segmenting the population, getting the people off the street that we can get off to make a dent now. Instead of having 5,000 people on the street, we could have 2,000 people on the street.
Councilman Carr, if I may, I...
Go ahead, please.
I would say I 100% agree in that shelter is not a solution to homeless as people in shelter are still homeless. And, and so, this is, we're specifically to want sheltering, but certainly we need strategies to address behavioral health and case management and rehousing. In tonight's conversation, we're gonna talk about how these two things work together and our proposal to, to link those things. It's not just about capacity and shelter, but it's capacity in the housing and service sector to, to your point, move them on and help people find permanent solutions. So, I just wanted to say, yes.
There's more to it. Thank you. Councilwoman Brashby, then I have a question, a comment, and we're gonna turn it to public testimony.
Thanks, Mayor. This is quick. I was with you until Emily said Point A was becoming Housing First. Where did that come from? I didn't hear that.
My recommendation might...
So, I missed that. So, Councilmember Hanson made a recommendation that item...
I made two. When I was speaking, you may not have heard me, but I asked for two amendments, that Housing First be in the resolution because that is our policy. And number two, that we advocate with the federal government as a, as a priority for the city to get more money for shelters.
I heard that second one and I am on board with that, but Housing First is exactly what we just removed from the earlier language. So, I don't know why we would add it back in.
Because Housing First is the policy of the city and we should not abandon that policy because it works. It is a data-tested, proven policy.
I understand that rationale, but that's just an opinion.
But that was my motion and that is why it is there. And you weren't listening when I spoke, but that is what happened.
Okay.
I did miss that piece of what you said, but...
Ms. Ashby, I would like to call the question.
I still, we have public testimony.
And we have public testimony. You know, we shouldn't bash programs that work in favor of programs that we also think work. This is not a zero-sum game. And it really is frustrating when you try to tear down the things that we've worked so hard to build that work for the people who are most in need because you care about something else. And I just can't continue to let you do that on this.
Okay, Mayor, I just, can I finish my comments, please? And so, I am sorry, I missed the part where he made A Housing First issue. So, I wanna just make sure I understand the way that reads. So, it says, "The city council hereby declares that city investments in shelters, including those administered by Sacramento Housing Redevelopment, on behalf of the city should..." So, A would then become Housing First models.
I think it would say something like embrace the Housing First philosophy. The rest of them would shift down. We would add a new letter I about targeting women and children and transition age youth. And I think the way I would suggest would be making then a section two, which is about our strategies with federal policymakers.
Right, okay, so I'm good with all that except for the first one because we've removed the words embracing the Housing First approach from the earlier language. And I think the difference where I differ here from Councilmember Hanson is that I don't mind if we do Housing First. In fact, I think we should. I think there's a lot of great Housing First models and we should absolutely do that. But what he's suggesting is that we're making Housing First a priority, which then limits everything else. So, I'm suggesting a broader umbrella that includes Housing First, but also allows room for not Housing First models. So, really, the exclusivity of the Housing First approach is what I am bucking up against. But I am not suggesting that we not do Housing First. I think that's okay, too. They should both be included. I worry that Point A being that the city should adhere to a Housing First model creates a priority for Housing First that I'm not comfortable with, which is exactly what I thought we were removing when we changed that language.
It's, it's a little more subtle than that. What Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson is saying is that Housing First is still a city priority, but we are not exclusively using Housing First. He doesn't wanna take up the Housing First reference completely, so I think you need...
And I'm fine with that, too, because I think we should do some Housing First.
But he's saying, he's saying it's our preferred approach. With this popu-, by the way, this resolution is just about the chronically homeless population that we're talking about and he's saying...
Understood, Mayor. I think I'd be fine if it just added but not limited to. I'd be fine with that. Because I want to include Housing First. I just don't want it to be limited to that.
That's up to the Vice Mayor.
I understand. So, if Point A said exactly what Emily said, prioritize or whatever he said.
He is not, he's not willing to support that. So, he's not willing to support that. I still think the resolution in its totality not only allows, but encourages the potential use of future city funds for a variety of approaches. That's, that's the way I read it altogether. Can I, I'm gonna make a comment here because this is, I actually regret that this workshop has devolved into a philosophical discussion and debate. I do. Because I wanna take us back to the mission here. And this is St. John's, I'm happy to have a separate workshop on St. John's and prevention early intervention programs and how to help anybody who's at risk of homelessness or homeless themselves. But this, yes, but this specific workshop is about how we deal with the thousands of people who are on our streets, pitching tents on Ahern, in Chavez Park, throughout our city, the subject of fierce and emotional discussion and debate here in our council chambers, the subject of many of the phone calls we get from constituents, both with big hearts and with compassion, but also concerned and complaining about the impact of long-term homelessness on our community. That's what this is about. So, I wanna ask Emily the key questionnaire that has gotten unfortunately lost in this debate and discussion. Do you recommend that we continue expanding low-barrier triage shelter in Sacramento at volume? And if so, why?
Yes, I do because I believe, as I think all of you have experienced, we have a crisis of unsheltered homelessness on our street. And it has been shown that when you lower barriers and when you allow people to come without preconditions, they are more likely to accept the services. It is a long path and it can be an expensive path out of homelessness. But what we've seen in the triage shelter, and I think the county has seen the same in theirs and the navigation centers in San Francisco and others, is that when you open the door to people who previously the door has been closed on, you make a substantial impact that I'm not sure how else to do it.
Mayor, I'm fine with that.
I know you're fine.
It's just that I don't want it to be to the exclusion of anything else.
I know that. I'm sorry.
No, no, so listen, I just need to make sure because I'm trying to figure out my vote here. And I think some of my colleagues are interested in how I'm perceiving this, too. Maybe they're not, maybe I'm alone in that. But I know that others have said they feel like as long as this doesn't preclude other things. I, I agree with that statement.
It doesn't preclude anything, but it...
But I worry that it does. So, I'd like to ask the city attorney if adding Point One back in...
She's, the, oh, Steve Hanson's motion did add Housing First back in. So, you wanna ask the city attorney whether that, whether that precludes, hold on, whether that precludes other options? Let's get the city attorney in 20 seconds or less, please.
Mr. Mayor, I called the question.
Okay, I'm not done speaking and we have public testimony.
Okay, well...
So, that's all. Go, go ahead, let me, I'll, I'll handle this here. We're gonna get right to it, I promise you. Quickly.
Okay, the amendment by Vice Mayor Hanson was to add a one, a new one A. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
To the resolution. And so, by, because this says they should and then all of the shelters have to meet these requirements that are set forth, if one of those requirements said Housing First, then it could be interpreted as if they don't meet the Housing First principles, then they don't fall under the primary funding options of the city.
Okay, but then you added...
Now that this is a policy.
You added a second section, though.
Well, that was...
No, you guys, forget it. I'm gonna finish my comments and then we're gonna call the question. We're gonna vote. That's it. You can vote, you can vote. Anybody can vote however they want because this is not providing any clarity here. Members, let us remember to keep our eyes on the prize here. And let us remember that this discussion about triage is only a piece of our continuum of care. Let's review what it is we are doing in the city of Sacramento and what we seek to do. We have procured a whole-person care grant to dramatically increase our outreach onto the streets. That outreach has resulted in over 700 people being accessed. Most of them have ended up in our triage shelter. Councilmember Carr, triage is not the silver answer here, but it is absolutely essential even with its expense because for people with severe mental illness and substance abuse who've been homeless for a long time, you cannot get them from the streets into permanent housing without the intermediary step of focused triage. And you talk about, I know you said it sort of tongue-in-cheek to make a point, but it might be less expensive to house people at the Sutter Hotel. It might be less expensive, but it would be an abysmal failure because the people we are talking about need much more than just housing in order to reclaim their lives. Third, we need mental health and substance abuse services and we are now partnering with the county to bring over Mental Health Services Act resources in order to serve these very people. Fourth, we need permanent housing. Tonight, you are gonna hear from Emily again, hopefully it won't be as controversial, that we intend to take this HEAP funding, if we apply for it, and I hope that we will, to actually provide double, triple, and quadruple security deposits for landlords to be able to induce the tight market, but the existing market, to actually rent to people who are trying to get off the streets cost-effective and, and a proven concept. And we need to build more permanent housing, which is why I'm calling for the establishment of a housing trust fund that could be funded by Measure U if it passes in two weeks. Now, is this working and is this hopeful? I see 300 people at least off the street, and I think you're undercounting, Emily, because you're not, because you don't know what happened to the 700-plus people who you've enrolled through whole-person care who aren't accounted for in those numbers. Some may still be on the street, but some may be housed. The number is probably closer to 400 or 500. Our task is to convert those 400 or 500 to 4,000 or 5,000. And if we stick to this and draw down the resources, we have a chance to do it. That's what this is about, not to the preclusion of St. John's or anything else that we seek to do. I urge an I vote on the resolution. I wanna see, hear from the public and then we're gonna call the question.
Mayor, I have eight speakers on this item. The first is Cynthia K. Spurling, then Pastor Jonathan Gainesborough, then Dan Aderhold. Ms. Spurling, she'll bring you a mic.
First off, when is anybody gonna start talking and listening to the homeless? I have spent the last four days trying to get blankets because I'm out on the street. What's even worse is I have a place to move into November 1st. There is no agency, nobody that will give me a place to sleep. So, I have to sleep on the street and I just now got blankets to be able to. There's more like me that are out there. They're not getting help. They're not getting any help at all. You have to start looking beyond the expert's definition of gee, this'll work, that'll work. There are people out there that are looking for solutions, have found solutions. They just need a little bit of help, but nobody wants to do that.
Next.
Our next speaker is Pastor Jonathan Gainesborough, then Dan Aderhold, then Robert Copland.
Welcome back, Pastor.
It's nice to see you all on this side of heaven. I hope to see you all on the other side of the fallen planet here. I know the clock is running. We never know, Jay. It could be tomorrow for any one of us. I like the discussion. I like passion and fire. We need more women on the city council. Somebody could say amen. Not to the exclusion of the gentlemen on the council. There was a discussion, there was a statement by the mayor about 1,000 tiny houses. I'm looking forward to that being fulfilled. There was a commitment to a triage center. Somebody that looked like me started the word triage here about two years ago. I explained that triage was in three parts. The first part of the three, of the triad is they're too far gone. They cannot be recovered. The second part is called the golden hour. The golden hour in triage is those who will be gone in one hour. They will be dead and gone if we don't reach them. The third part of triage is those who can wait one hour. I love St. John's. I pushed very hard for the 600K that was approved by you all. I commend that. But just in my final time, HUD from the National, with all of their funding for the continuum of care, has focused those who have been on the streets the longest, in the worst condition. They're targeting the golden hour. If it was your grandson, your granddaughter, your child, your daughter, you would not say, I want...
Esther, your time is complete.
I want this body system or that other. All of the body systems need to work together.
Speaker, thank you, Pastor.
You are a team. You're doing great. Keep up the good work.
Our next speaker is Dan Aderhold, then Robert Copland, then Steve Waters.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dan Aderhold. I'm leader of Never Watch, I'm in Township Nine and also homeless advocate, also known as Moses of the Homeless, my crew calls me. I have 11 homeless crews. We saved and cleaned American River Parkway when the parking recreations had no money to do so. With the help, thanks, Jeff Harris here. I appreciate Jeff Harris very much. He's the one that started something. He backed me up. He started something and turned it into something really beautiful with the homeless. I now have 11 crews. We're going around cleaning up all over Sacramento, not just American River. We're going around helping schools. We have a priority here. Children and women come first in my crews. And I'm really annoyed, well, I just heard today about waiting till after January to help kids and mothers have a home to stay in right now. Where you guys wanna wait till then? You guys really wanna wait till after Christmas for a family to have a place to stay and sleep? I really think you guys need to do the St. John's thing way before then, you guys. That's just my personal opinion. You guys really need to help these kids and families. They should come first. Also, I wanna thank everybody here for allowing me to speak. I am totally appalled, though, by what's been going on. I've been listening to you guys for an hour and a half arguing, like, I can't believe what's happening. You guys are state officials and anyone that seemed to be making sense is Steve Hanson, Jeff Harris. Larry Carr, you made a few, a few little things you said there. A few little words you said that kinda threw me off here. You mentioned people with the value of money. I've helped, I'm right now helping 900 people on the homeless right now, 11 crews. And I spend my own money. We're not getting help. I'm not promising anything. We're doing it with our own money. And it shouldn't matter about money when it comes to humanity and helping the people. So, please keep that in mind. You know, thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Copland, then Steve Waters, then Jeffrey Tardagia.
This city council tonight acted like a bunch of children arguing between each other. I think Angela Gashby is correct. St. John's should be helped. You should do either a fundraiser or do a grant proposal to help St. John's. Larry Carr, they said move along, move along where? That was a disgraceful comment.
Point of order.
I don't care if you go, I get a point of order.
Point of order, point of order, yes, sir. Councilman Carr?
Speaker is addressing me directly by name.
Okay, if you could address the full council, please, Mr. Copland, please.
Well, one of your, uh, city councilors said move along. I like to know where that person wants the homeless to move along to. I mean, adequate money with homeless? You should be having a little more compassion. Most of Steve Hanson said was correct, that... Most of Steve Hanson said was correct, that we should get the federal government to work on that. And I get a point of order because I agree with them. I mean, really? I've seen a bunch of more adults and, my seven-year-old great-niece is more, has more sense than some of this county, city council members.
Okay, Robert, thank you.
I'm not done yet. Don't count me out, 50 seconds early.
You're just insulting everybody. I don't know that it really helps.
I appraise that, Ash, Ashby and Hanson. That's not insulting everybody. Okay, quit arguing. Interrupting people, that's what you do the most. I mean, you should find alternate sources for housing, permanent housing. This city council is a joke, for the most part.
Next speaker is Steve Waters, then Jeffrey Tardaglia, then Howard Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. You all know me, I'm Steve Waters with First Step Communities. I'm going to toss my notes out and just speak for my two minutes quickly, if I can, from my own feelings. I hear a lot of frustration here this afternoon. I've listened to the whole discussion. I know it's important to have. I just want to say that I feel frustrated, too. And part of it goes back to something that Councilmember Harrison, Hanson said. He talked about something we talked about nine years ago. And I remembered that. And what I remembered was that I've been very unsuccessful. I've been talking to you for nine years about, and it's something we've constantly improved the quality of taking your input about building a tiny home community with intensive services, case management, and so on. I can't seem to convince you that there's merit in that model. And yet, when I talk with each one of you independently, you say it's great. I'm frustrated, too. If we had acted nine years ago and built something, followed it with triage centers, other types of solutions, warehouse shelters, if you want, if we did one a year, we'd have nine of those sitting there now. And our only challenge would be to the sustainability of the operating funds. We seem to start over every year. Just let me list, well, I don't even have time for that. I will send my letter that I didn't read to you. I'd like to just share in that letter some of the reasons why I think the model deserves consideration. I think it meets all the requirements of heap funding, and I think it's an important thing for you to consider. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey Tardaglia, then Howard Lawrence.
Mayor, an hour ago, the question should have been asked, why St. John's could not be funded? That would have been an answer that would have helped solve this not an hour later. The next question for you as mayor is what are the policies that need to be examined for why things cannot be funded to address the homeless? Thank you, Steve. I will tell you, I will not go back to Beal. I will not go back to Mitchell. I will not go back to any of our senators statewide, Amby or John, to request something more. I have participated in Sacramento Steps Forward for the last few years and seen $20 million of homeless money every year going in here. You have the option. And the ironic part about this is, when did Frank Thompson, Thomas, is it? Come to you and say to you that you need to do a homeless crisis emergency? Declare it. This is what I think you're going to do tonight, so that you can get $20 million of heap funding that will be here, only accessible for the next two years, to show you how you need to use it and show and expand what you need to do. I'm not pleased in what I see, and because you don't be participating in all the 20-plus boards that you guys all seem to be on, and, yes, I've gone to InterSanctuary a number of times, supported and looked at it. I've gone to the food bank, supported those things before. You people need to spend the time so that you understand when you turn around and talk about this homeless, when you know that Los Angeles has spent a billion dollars plus.
Thank you, Mr. Tardaglia, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Howard Lawrence, then John Weatherall, and Tracy Mapes is our final speaker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm from Sacramento Act Area Congregations Together, which, as you know, is a grassroots community organizing network here in Sacramento. The first point I want to make is that we stand here this afternoon in support of the staff recommendation, and if we understand the resolution as has been amended, we're probably in support of that. I would like to say to both Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Hanson, that we particularly appreciate your comments about who the homeless are and their humanity. And so, that was missing at a hearing that we attended earlier today, and I just wanted to express our appreciation. In your considerations, you heard Steve Waters come forward with his First Steps Community. In Sacramento Act, we have examined that and have seen his plans, and we agree with his analysis that at some point, this could be a viable option to create a, an effective triage function here in Sacramento. So, as we roll forward with our plans, we ask you to consider that proposal. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Weatherall, and then Tracy Mapes is our final speaker.
Hi, thank you all for your care and compassion. I know that you're all arguing about how to be most effective, and that is very refreshing to have that discussion. I have seen a rapid growth in people who are disabled, particularly in wheelchairs, out on the Mall in the last two years, and people who are on social security disability, like myself, who am schizophrenic and bipolar. What we need is, we need housing at the Section 8 level, and those housing vouchers are on hold right now because there's not enough housing to go around. And so, whatever you can do to get housing at the Section 8 level is very important because that's affordable for someone on social security disability. But at $900, if we don't have that, we don't have any way of attaining housing because it's strictly out of our financial reach. The people who are on social security disability are cooperating with their doctors, and they are trying. And it takes a lot of effort and navigators, usually like from TLCS, to help with attaining housing. Thank you for your concern, and I hope you are able to all cooperate and keep your eye on the goal of trying to ensure that we have housing.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Tracy Mapes.
Put this up on the screen. Oh, wrong side, okay. This is what we started out with on Ahern Street, an encampment of 50 tents, 40 to 50 tents, with 80 to 150 people. And within a month, this was the city's answer to the solution, and that was to whitewash the situation and clear the streets and bring in the street sweepers and discard everybody's personal property. What I'd like you to know about these people is they struggle every day. You may think of them as shiftless and lazy, but homelessness is a 24-hour-a-day job trying to survive. And I want you to understand that these people are trying to collect the items that are necessary to be accepted into society. That includes hygiene, clothing, something to look presentable. Maybe they want to get a job, but they can't do it on a daily basis because of their schedule. If this town has set city limits, once you've set those city limits, you became responsible for the people inside those city limits. And the ordinances that you project against them are the reason those people are on the street today after 150 years or 170 years of cityhood. And if you were a animal shelter, these people would be taken away from you, and you people would be incarcerated for negligence. This is a humanitarian situation. We talked about my toilet thing. We never had any follow-up on it. The next day, these people were moved out. We need some kind of solution, and you're approaching it from the wrong direction. You have to go down and talk to these people and see what their solution is. You have to quit using outside agencies to try to create a solution for people who have special circumstances. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mapes.
Members, the hardest of hard issues. Let's stay the course here. Five elements, assertive outreach, triage, permanent housing of various types, mental health and substance abuse services, and prevention and early intervention. We've had success with this model. Let's continue what we're doing. How many by the, okay, I'll leave that alone. Let's continue what we're doing, okay? Continue to up the numbers. Let's call the question. All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? That's a nay-no vote. All right, we are in recess. We have a closed session now, similar subject, and we will be back at 5:00 or at least a few minutes after 5:00. Thank you very much.